So, welcome to this forum for candidates for Ward Nine of the Corvallis City Council Race. This online program is co-hosted by the Lynn Benton NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, both organizations that I am proud to be a member of. The League of Women Voters of, sorry, the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP was formed in 1971 and is a nonpartisan organization that works to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. The League of Women Voters of Corvallis is a nonpartisan advocacy and education organization working to defend our democracy and engage our community on the issues that matter most to them. My name is Jessica McDonald and I am active in the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, currently serving as the Voter Education Chair. I am joined by our co-moderator this evening, my friend and community leader, Angel Harris. Welcome, Angel, and I'll pass it to you for introduction.
Hi, my name's Angel Harris. I am the past president of the Lynn Benton NAACP and I've been a resident of Corvallis for 29 years. So, it's been great to be in this community. So, thank you both for joining us today. And this is very helpful as we enter Election Day. So, thank you so much for taking time out. So, welcome to Toni Cadena and Karen Jean Cannon to this candidate forum. To open this discussion, we're going to ask you to take two minutes to introduce yourself to the voters watching this recording and share why you are running for the City Council. Okay, so Toni, we're going to start with you and then we'll move to you, Karen.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. And first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters and Lynn Benton NAACP for hosting this. Definitely appreciate it. I will apologize in advance if you hear a dog barking in the background. We have a young dog that just got spayed two days ago and she's on meds, but she might be a little bit antsy. So, if you hear that, please accept my apologies. By way of introduction, I wanted to say that the, that basically the values that I was raised with are really kind of what have, what has been my driving force in my life. And those values are family, hard work, always learning, excellence, service, and inspiring the next generation. I am, my, my mother was born in Mexico and came to this country when her father had passed away when she was an infant. My dad is the son of immigrant parents from Mexico. I grew up in San Jose, California. And even though my parents had no education to speak of, my mother didn't finish elementary school and my dad didn't finish high school, that was something that they really instilled in me. And so, I am the third child of four, but I was the first to go to college. And I completed a bachelor, bachelor degrees in economics and psychology. And then later on, got my MBA, all of those degrees from Stanford University. I worked for Hewlett Packard for 25 years. I came up also 29 years ago to Corvallis with Hewlett Packard and worked for HP for 25 years. I left HP. I was the Chief Financial Officer for View Plus Technologies and then also taught for 12 years at Willamette University and their Graduate School of Management. And after I decided to stop teaching, I decided to run for City Council. I've been pretty active in the nonprofit world as well. So, I'm running really to serve the, the ward and my, and the city. I don't have any single particular issue. I just feel like I have a lot of experience in complex arenas that I hope to bring in service to the city and help make pragmatic and long-lasting decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Toni. And Karen Jean?
Hi, thanks for having us. My name is Karen Jean Cannon. I grew up in Corvallis. I've lived a few other places, but it's a small enough period of time that at this point, it's basically like I've lived here my whole life. And I'm actually going to be referencing my submission to the League of Women Voters. Excuse me, there are so many statements I've been doing. The Voters Pamphlet, the Benton County Voters Pamphlet, and the League of Women Voters Questions for the 411 candidate resource. I have institutional knowledge of Corvallis from living here my whole life. I've been volunteering with one organization or another since I was 15 years old. In 2019, I played a part in trying to keep the Horticulture Department at LBCC. More recently, I've been involved in peace and justice work for Palestine. And most recently, I've become active for keeping our landfill from expanding. A landfill this near a metropolis should not become a landfill with no cap on garbage. The city's most urgent needs are to refuse to accept leachate, that our water treatment plant is unequipped to process from our public services, and to increase the frequency of bus service and make the city bus drivers, city employees with benefits so that we have an even faster bus system that is a true alternative to cars. We also need protections for renters, a return of the citizen committees and true citizen involvement in city government, and a welcoming policy towards testifiers at the City Council meetings. The number one way to address these needs is to consult multiple perspectives, leaning on the breadth of experience and knowledge in this community, and start working away at challenges and opportunities until solutions emerge. I love learning new things all the time and to learning more about the city government as well as what I already know. I'm interested in why things are the way they are. Even if an answer is not one I like, I would rather know the truth or truths and then go from there. I'm passionate about community involvement and the public. I love getting to know people and getting to know local government better. The product of a given City Council decision is not just a new park, for example, but the connections made between citizens during the process for installing that new park. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, candidates. We will now turn towards a list of questions to respond to. These questions have been provided to the candidates in advance and we will set a limit of two minutes per response. And for our first question, we will start with Karen and then move to Toni. And a note to the viewers out there, in this internet world, we have some times where we have low bandwidth. And Karen is now turning to join us by phone. So, you'll be hearing her voice throughout the rest of this forum. Onto our first question. What do you see as the biggest issues facing the city in the next five years? How do you propose to tackle those issues? Karen, onto you.
Okay, one of the things that I'm excited about is looking at ways to strengthen our bus system. It's already really awesome being free and connecting with other network bus systems throughout the valley. But I think we can make it even stronger by increasing the frequency of the routes. And I think one way to do that is to, when there's like new developments, then part of the money can go towards bus system strengthening. And also, I think this will benefit the city because when there's students who don't have cars, they can then take the bus. This can enliven our city. It can help parents who don't have, you know, two cars per family to be able to still get around. And as I mentioned before, another important thing is to make sure that we don't have a landfill that is encouraging republic service to bring in as much garbage as fast as they can, that we do have a cap on a landfill so close to a city here. And other issues that are important, of course, we want to maintain the things that are wonderful about Corvallis, like our parks and our citizen participation. We want to also, gosh, there's so many good things and important things. We want to really support our renters in Corvallis, make sure that they're protected, make sure that social services are strong. So, if police are needing to deal with local issues, there's either a social service worker that's able to go with them or sometimes it's more appropriate for a social service worker than a policeman to be called. So, just continuing to look at ways to serve our community as best as possible.
Great, thank you. And now it turns to Toni for the same question.
Okay, well, I think that I will put these into very, very big categories. There are lots of issues we need to address, but I'll put them into two categories. I would say ensuring our long-term economic sustainability is critical for the city. And into that big bucket, I would put a number of things. Obviously, affordable housing, housing that is affordable is important. And so, I think we need to build significantly a greater number of houses and a different variety of houses, of all varieties of houses. That broadens our tax base and enables us to fund quite a lot of things. So, under economic vitality, economic sustainability, I would put housing. We need to encourage businesses to come to Corvallis, which means having industrial land that is shovel-ready. OSU creates a lot of businesses that they would like to locate here, but have a difficult time doing that. That also means thoughtful and planned-out significant land annexation. And potentially, one of the things that I'm working with this city staff on is what would it take for us to proactively build out infrastructure, which would make development happen more easily and sooner? Obviously, we want to support our existing and new businesses. All of that, as I've said, broadens the tax base, which addresses affordability and allows us to pay for the infrastructure and amenities that the community needs, wants, and is willing to pay for. Vitality is also as one element in addressing homelessness. Obviously, if people cannot afford to live here or, or it is very costly for them to live here, that impacts many folks and many folks who have fallen into a bad economic situation. But that is only one element in addressing homelessness. Obviously, we also need improved partnerships and funding pathways for support. The other big category I would put in is excellence in governance, which I'll talk more about in one of the other questions. But that means long-term planning, getting our priorities clear, working collaboratively in addressing liability issues.
Thank you, Toni. Onto you, Angel.
All right, for our next question, we're going to start with you, Toni, and then to Karen. How will you work to ensure that meaningful engagement and input from the public is represented in your deliberations and decisions as a city councillor? And Toni, we'll start with you.
Okay, great. That's a great question. I, I would put it into a few things that I think are important in engagement. One is that we need to represent all voices. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. I think one of the other things we can do better as a city, and I've talked with our Public Information Officer, I think we can do a lot better outbound communication and inbound communication around key strategic items. The, our website is great if you want to know what to take a particular class or get a particular piece of information. But I think the community wants to know more about what are the big issues and keep updated on those. So, I think strategic communication is a, is a big one. There are many avenues for input. I think we can do a better job of highlighting those opportunities for input. We do a community survey, which is great, but we do it every two years. And I think there's opportunity for improvement in the survey as well as perhaps more frequent mini-surveys to gather input. We do get a lot of public comments. I would like to have a process where we look for themes that are coming up in community comments as well as outrage, I'm sorry, outreach for engagement is something that we can focus on. And back to my first point, representing all. I know when I was campaigning, lots of folks I know will not come to council and testify. They won't write in. They, they just really want the city to run well and be governed well. And I think we need to represent not only the active voices, but the voices that aren't as active. So, I think it's really important to represent all in the community. And that's what I, I think is critical in the area of engagement. We have a lot of public engagement opportunities in Corvallis and I think we can improve upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni. And Karen, the next. Can you hear me? Karen Jean?
And Karen, just in case I've sent you a notice to unmute and it might be on your phone.
Just checking.
I got you. Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so if you can answer that question as well, Karen Jean?
Yes, absolutely. So, for how I'm to work to ensure that meaningful engagement and from the public is represented in my deliberations and decisions as a City Council, excuse me. I think that there's a couple of things that can be done there. One simple one is to put the city councillors' business cards right by the sign-in sheet at City Council meetings so that folks who are there can easily grab a card and contact them later. Another is to make sure that city councillors feel comfortable asking questions of people who are testifying at the meeting. Another thing is to take the citizen advisory boards that have been meeting and make sure that they are meeting regularly, that there's minutes online for other citizens who weren't able to go to the meetings to access them. And yeah, just make sure the things we already have in place are happening. Make sure that folks that speak up for, you know, their departments, whether they work for the city or city councillors that speak up for boards to be fully staffed, are not treated punitively, but are rather encouraged to stand up for their departments and stand up for the desires of the citizens.
All right, thank you so much, Karen Jean. And Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, for this question, we will start with Karen and then move to Toni. The city has a large urban growth boundary. What are your plans to service this land for the future, including infrastructure like sewer, water, and transportation? Do you support a memorandum of understanding or an MOU with the county in relationship to the use and development within the UGB? And we'll start again with Karen.
Okay, yeah, I support there being coordination between the city and the county to ensure that lands within the urban growth boundary are available for future annexations and expansion for the city of Corvallis. I think that makes sense, you know, to arrange houses so that, you know, should roads be put in or higher density later, that it will be workable to do that. And yeah, the urban growth boundary is serviced with infrastructure by the developments that go in and I think that makes sense. And I also just happen to just want to put in that I really value the green space that we have, that I really value the fact that our land use codes, you know, require trees and green space around the buildings because I think everyone, no matter income level, really benefits from having green space nearby. And I also value the green belt and so that surrounds our city and so I am protecting it. So, I think that it's very important to, as we're building, be mindful of the green spaces as well.
Thank you, Karen Jean. And the question now turns to Toni.
Yes, so we do, Corvallis is fortunate. We have a pretty significant urban growth boundary. And I know that at the state level, there has been a push to allow communities to increase their urban growth boundary. I don't think we need to do that. We have a lot of developable land within our urban growth boundary. We've made a lot of improvements as a city in simplifying our land development code. We also have had a lot of requirements come down from the state level about clear and objective guidelines for what is in our land development code. We have the climate-friendly equitable communities, direct direction that has come from the state. All of those things are, are important and we have made great progress. We're building more housing now than we have in decades, which is all great. I do think, to reference some of the things I mentioned before, that we should plan thoughtfully for some fairly large land annexations. I think this would encourage development that is more affordable because you get economies of scale in being able to develop. We would attract those sorts of developments. I think we should look internally and are currently, that is, one of the items we're pursuing is to reduce barriers to housing development. So, make it more predictable, easier, and potentially less expensive to develop housing. We also would need to reduce barriers to industrial development. I came to Corvallis in 1995. There have been periods of time in the Corvallis history where folks didn't really want the city to grow. And so, sometimes our infrastructure hasn't been developed in a way that makes that easier, easy to do. And I think that's an, an area that we need to address. So, more proactive infrastructure build-out, looking how to best fund that either through system development charges or other creative means. I mentioned previously, industrial land that is shovel-ready is a key important factor. And yes, working with the Benton County is critically important. We're already working with them in economic development, so I think we need to do more there.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. And back to you, Angel.
All right. Are there specific actions you would take if elected or re-elected to advance racial equity in our community? And Toni, we'll start with you and then we'll go to Karen Jean.
Okay, so as a person of color, one of the things that I am passionate about is the empowerment of people and creating community is also critical, I think, to advancing equity. Being a pragmatic person as well, one of the things that I'm very focused on is our ability to improve equity is often related to economic situations. So, the more that people are able to thrive, the more that that contributes to well-being in the community. And so, I think one important factor in improving, in enabling people to participate in wealth creation is being able to own a home, for example. Owning a home is probably the single biggest thing, factor in the disparity in wealth between marginalized or disadvantaged communities. And I think that's, that's critically important. So, the things that I've talked about in terms of housing, economic vitality, I think those things are all critically important. And that's why I'm a proponent, very much a proponent of increasing our housing supply. I think that increasing our housing supply is also an equity issue for those who are renting in the community because rents are high. But we are seeing more development of rental units and other types of housing, which I think will really help in terms of being able to create that for our community in general. I think fostering the, another factor I would point to is fostering an inclusive community where, where we have avenues for participation and community creation across all spectra of our community and as well, where we create a community where all are provided with the respect that we should offer as a matter of course. And I think conversation is the, the best anecdote that I know to ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni. Karen Jean, same question.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just want to agree with my opponent about, with Mr. Cadena, about making sure that, you know, we respect people and that all people deserve respect. And I also think that as city councillors, it's our responsibility to be involved in the systemic aspects of that. So, one thing that I would advocate for is the incident bias report that has come before the city previously and to actually look at that, deal with any concerns and go ahead and get that passed. Make sure that there is tracking of both, you know, if there are hate crime incidences in Corvallis, then that they're tracked, whether they're resolved or not, so that there is data there to see how, what's going on. And this would apply to the police department as well.
Right. Thank you, Karen Jean. And Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So, onto the next question and we will start with Karen and then go to Toni. Council events have called attention to the relationship between the council and the city manager and staff leadership. Do you think that the relationship between council and the city staff and management is in need of any changes? And we'll start with Karen Jean.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I think that's a good question. And one thing that I think would be important is that council have access and be able to talk to all city staff. That's a resource that's there that the citizens are paying for, for the city councillors, you know, to, to run the city and also for the city councillors to be able to know what's going on so that they can make good policy for the city. So, right now, it's my understanding that they are only supposed to contact the directors. And I just really think that it's very important. It would be strange if as a citizen, I'm allowed to contact city staff with questions about housing or, or whatnot. And then I would actually have less access to staff as a city councillor.
Thank you, Karen Jean. And same question to you, Toni.
Yes, so I, we're going through a process of talking about priorities and I've been pretty outspoken about the need for the mayor and the city council to establish as a top, one of our top priorities, excellence in governance. So, I do think there's room for improvement in the relationship between city council, city staff, and our advisory committees and commissions and members of the community. Specific to the council, I think we need to strive for improvement in our functioning. We have in the strategic operating plans, metrics for many of the city departments, but we don't have any for us as a council. So, how do we know we're operating in an excellent manner? And I think that's something that I think I've advocated for us to really work on as a council because I think that we should have a sense of how to improve. I think to affect real change requires authentic conversation, a willingness to truly listen and understand, and being clear with one another about our roles and responsibilities in the governance of the cities. I, I've worked in many different environments and I've taught courses in leadership. I, I've seen the power of positive collaboration and I've seen the corrosiveness of divisiveness and making those that don't agree with us into the other. So, I'm, I'm ever optimistic that I think there's opportunity for improvement and in this particular area and I'm dedicated to making that happen.
Thank you, candidates. Back to you, Angel.
All right. Next question is, the city is in the process of planning and designs for a new civic campus on Madison Avenue. What are your thoughts on the civic campus to replace the existing city hall? Would you support its development? We'll start with you, Toni, and then move on to Karen Jean.
Okay, well, this has come up to the council when we talked about the Parks Maintenance Facility. We, the city did, before I got on council, the city did a facilities assessment and many of our buildings are in very poor condition and folks can read more about that. But we definitely need to address the issues that are raised in the facilities assessment. And in the civic campus, we're talking about city hall and a police department. I've always said that I am open to and I don't have a particular answer. We have a community engagement task force. We have lots of information that will come before us. I think I've always said that I should remain open to all possibilities. We have an opportunity in a civic campus to potentially envision something that is the, the hub of the city where the community can gather. We should evaluate it as one opportunity, co-locating city hall and the police department, a plaza area, as well as taking into account what's going on in other areas of Madison Avenue from the private sector such as the proposed hotel at the end of, at the intersection of First and Madison. Of course, we should understand what each element of a city campus, of a civic campus would cost. After all, I'm a finance person, so I'm, I definitely want to know, how much does a police department? After all, I'm a finance person, so I definitely want to know, how much does a police department cost us? How much does a city hall cost? What would be the cost of creating a civic campus? I believe we should honor the past, be realistic about the present, and aspirational about the future. So I don't have a position at the moment, because I'm still open to hearing what the engagement task force has to say, and us looking further. But I do know that we have to address the issues raised in the facilities assessment, because our buildings are falling apart. They're not conducive to attracting and retaining people. They're not conducive to collaboration. They're not energy efficient. There are a number of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Karen Jean, same question.
Okay, so with the civic campus, it's very important to look carefully at the proposals, and I really appreciate that the council did separate the Parks Department renovation from doing it all at once, like kind of all or nothing. And so I really believe that the public really deserves to know actual numbers before, and the councillors, of course, before voting on the individual projects, and to really get quite a bit of information about what the existing issues are, or what the opportunities are in terms of. I'm honestly a little confused, because I was at a city council meeting where my opponent was just saying he was in favor of the whole shebang, and they didn't have any numbers ahead of time. So anyway, but that's great that he wants numbers ahead of time. That is great. I fully agree. I also, it's my understanding that the civic campus was, the current plan has no parking as part of it. So I just think that it might be racing ahead without enough precautions.
All right, thank you so much, Karen Jean. And Jessica, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, this is a topic that we sort of touched on just a little bit earlier. Karen Jean, we're going to start with you, and then move to Tony. Are reported incidents of racial bias and hate crimes adequately documented and addressed in our city? Would you alter or augment the process in place? Again, starting with Karen Jean.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is a very important issue, and I believe data is a very important piece of being able to look at what's actually going on in the city. And I believe I spoke some to it earlier with the incident bias report. Also making sure that the stops that police are making are documented, so that that can also be examined and make sure that there is, you know, if there is racial bias, address it there, so that it is discontinued and addressed. And it issues, you know, all of these things need to fall under the umbrella of not having discrimination in our city.
Thank you, Karen Jean, and same question to you, Tony.
Okay, I do, in this topic, I believe that we have worked with the state of Oregon, as well as the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments on the, to facilitate the reporting of incidents of racial bias. They fall into two categories, those that are criminal and non-criminal. The non-criminal ones tend to be addressed at the state level, utilizing resources that the state tries to leverage across communities. Ones that fall into the criminal category are investigated by the Corvallis Police. All incidents are reported and reviewed with the Police Advisory Review Board. I believe even after the review by the Police Advisory Review Board, there are further avenues of oversight available. And I'm not sure of all the details of of the specifics. This is something that I know that in talking with members of the Police Advisory Review Board, we've had thankfully, very low incidences of racial bias reported of a criminal nature. And so I think that's, that's, that's great. I am, of course, in favor of transparency and understanding the magnitude of this issue in our community, and I think we have avenues to follow up on that, and I'm happy to learn more. One of the, one of the topic areas, one of the boards I'm interested in participating more on is the Police Advisory Review Board.
Thank you, candidates. Back to you, Angel.
All right, we have come to the time where you get to give us some final comments. You will each have one and a half minutes for your final comments. So please tell voters, we're gonna start with you, Tony, but please tell the voters listening, why they should vote for you.
Okay, first, I do feel I have to address a comment that my opponent made. I did not go for the whole shebang. Anybody who would like to know what I said at the council meeting should review the video. Thank you very much. I think you should, I hope this has given you a sense of what kind of a councillor I would be. I encourage you to also check out my website, tonycadina.com. Feel free to contact me. I think you should vote for me because I have a proven track record. I have a diversity of experience and learnings from large and small business, higher education, and the nonprofit world. I will work hard. I do work hard, listen well, and work with all folks. I aim and try to make sound, pragmatic decisions with clear achievable outcomes. I have made it a practice in my two years on council of reaching out to those who disagree with me. Those conversations have been valuable for me, and I trust they're valuable for them as well. And I think that good relationships have formed as a result of that. I'm a strong believer that the only path to making lasting progress is through conversation and collaboration. And I think that should be particularly doable in our local nonpartisan election, and locally where we care all about many of the same things. If you give me the opportunity to represent you, know that I will represent you. If you vote for me, I will represent you, even if you do not vote for me. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Karen Jean, your final comments?
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate this opportunity. I believe that conversations are good and important as well. But I also think action really speaks for itself. And I just want to clarify that my comment about the civic campus and what I was there at the council meeting, what Mr. Cadena said, is he was okay with having the Parks and Rec Department considered separately, but he was in favor of the rest being considered as a whole. And as he was outlining just now, the rest is very comprehensive. It's the police department. It's also even a hotel and the city hall. And I'm saying, I didn't think they should be considered as a group. I felt they should be delineated. Speaking also to the Community Police Advisory Board, that group is supposed to meet monthly, and in 2024, only had three meetings. And I just think that we should really look at how often these groups are meeting, whether the minutes are posted. So just having something in name is not the same as having something in deed. Something that I have gotten really personally involved in recently is, and I look forward, I will say, I look forward to learning more about the citizen advisory boards, and specifically the policing one, and maybe that's something that, you know, after the election is over and stuff, that, you know, whoever gets elected, maybe the other of us, you know, can work together. I think one thing, we've had seventeen people running for city council seats this time around, and a lot of people, including, I think, all of us candidates are pretty glad about that and really proud that Corvallis has a lot of people running. And I would like for all of us to find ways to continue to serve. So that, you know, that sounds good to me. One concern that I have, a specific personal information as well, is with the landfill situation. I testified at a city council meeting speaking to the issue that currently Republic Services continues to push for expanding the landfill, and the way the contract is written, that would mean there was no cap, and they could bring in as much garbage as fast as they could. And I don't think that's responsible. I don't think it's good to do it near a city, and it is not a good location for that. And when I gave that testimony, the only response is.
I'm so sorry, your time, your time is up. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ward Nine Candidates, Tony Cadena and Karen Jean Cannon, for joining in a lively discussion and for sharing your interests in taking a seat or retaining your seat on the Corvallis City Council. To all watching, on behalf of the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, thank you for listening in. Remember to talk to your friends, your neighbors, your family about their voting plans. Get out, vote early. And thank you all for participating in our democracy. Have a wonderful evening.